Trustee Moses.
I have a question right now, and I don't know if it was answered clearly. If the, if we get another report and suddenly the positivity rate jumps to say 7%, what happens then?
You would have to make that decision.
And I think what I'm hearing, Trustee Watts saying is maybe we should look at that decision before we make a decision to reopen. Instead of just wait till then, that's what I'm hearing her say. The other thing, Mary, I was, I was on my phone using my calculator. And you're not wrong, you're 100% right when it comes to Dearborn compared to Resto Wayne County. I was just using the calculator back in October. You know, Dearborn has 6% of the population, we're at, we had 15% of the cases. This report from last week, obviously, we still have the 6% of the population and we're still at 14.2% of the cases. So, but we, just because we don't want to, we don't want to move the goalposts. It's football season, by the way, since football, congratulations to Coach Robert Sala, Fortsing graduate, head coach of the New Jersey now. But anyways, congratulations to him, I'm sure some of his family members on this call. But we don't want to move the goalposts. We don't want to move the goalposts with the positivity rate and we don't want to come back here and say, you know, Dearborn, 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 because this is the decision we made in October. Going back to Trustee Watts' point is that if we get the five or less percentage rating on a Tuesday and we waited to the following Tuesday, it's still a bubble of 5%, that's the second trigger. That is actually our plan, that's our plan word for word we put together, you know, put together back in October, just FYI.
Well, and I think, Trustee Barry, what you were saying, number one, if he came to the Lions, it may not be an improvement because we have a whole, our Lions coaches don't do very well here, so he might be better where he is.
He's too young to come to the Lions, his career ended within two years, no doubt in my mind. I love the Lions, I'm a hometown kind of guy.
Stay on topic.
Sorry, so, and the other thing is, I think that we just need to-
Trying to line up things, Jim.
You know, and I think, you know, as every day that goes by, we're receiving more and more information. So I think what we can, I don't, you know, in the next, you know, the meeting on February 8th, we may have way more information about vaccines. So I think it's what, what, with what we have now, is it, I may hearing that we, do we have to decide, do we want to stay with the current metrics that we had back in October? Or are we looking to change those metrics?
That's really the question, and what I had asked before is that would we at least enter the idea of switching the way we would phase back in?
Okay, and I think going back to the positive, and I think going back to the positivity rate, I was under the understanding that we needed two weeks. So from a Tuesday to a Tuesday, those reports, and then the following Tuesday. So am I, is, am I misunderstanding that from October, it's just two reports, one week apart?
There's two different things that we're kind of talking about here, in my eyes. The one is the way we bring them back in terms of comeback when. The second thing would be, we're currently saying two weeks, right? The two-week mark, so we'd hit, hit it on a Tuesday, not the following Monday, but the Monday after that. That's where we're currently at. So then there, the second idea is, do we really wait for that second Monday before we start? Or do we start the Monday after we receive the report? Donald, we can't hear you right now, you're muted.
My understanding is that the learning labs gives us the buffer. We still have two weeks because after the first week, we start the learning lab. So we don't phase in the regular classrooms until the following week. So that would be two weeks. But having the learning labs there gives some of our students that really need to get going a little, an extra week. And it also gives us a chance to kind of assess how everything's going with a smaller group of students via the ones in a learning lab. But I do have a question about the learning lab, I just want to make sure that's my understanding, is that correct?
From what I understand, we're discussing the trigger of the learning lab, because the labs is what's going to trigger that schedule we saw.
Right, so we were talking about starting the learning labs a week after. So that's one week, you start the learning labs, and then the next, a week later, the regular phase-in starts. So that is actually two weeks.
What was presented to us, I see what you're saying, but what was presented to us is the plan, you know, the learning labs in week two, week three. What we're trying to discuss is what triggers the learning labs. I see your point, I understand your point, that you're still, it's still two weeks away. But we want to make sure that we're still, you know, below that 5%.
Or are we starting the learning labs the Monday after we get a report under 5%? Or are we starting the learning labs two weeks after we get a report of being under 5%? Is that-
The question becomes if we start the labs the Monday after we get the 5% or less, what happens if it goes back up to 6% or 7%?
I like having the buffer, the two-week buffer.
Which is our original plan.
Which is our original plan. We stick to our plan, we don't have to do, take any action, just stick to our plan and just keep numbers. And I'm hoping that on February 8th, we're gonna, you know, not February 11th, I'm just throwing these numbers out there, dates. On February 11th, Glenn Malick was on a report that this is, we're under 5%. And the following week, it's going to be 5% and that triggers everything we've been talking about, according to the plan that we put together in October.
And I don't have a problem with the new schedule of how they wanted to phase in the class, the classes.
I don't either. But we don't want to tweak it on this end and other tweak on the end and to say it's really not two weeks. Then this, then you're talking about, you know, almost three weeks really. But I would be comfortable with the change. Again, I'm just speaking my, you know, my opinion, I would be comfortable if we get to 5% on, on that Tuesday. And we know that's trending, we're still trending in the right direction and you want to pull, you know, pull the trigger and get the lab started on that Monday and keep an eye on things. But Trustee Watts makes a good point that what happened if things, and Trustee McDowell mentioned that there's, you know, there's all the things going on here. And hopefully by then, you know, we got the vaccines going, you know, a lot of things going on and we don't have to have this discussion. But what if things go back and get a little uglier, what are we going to do?
I'd be willing to do this motion of the one week as opposed to the two after we have a, if some miracle occurs and we can get 50, 70% of our staff who want to be vaccinated, vaccinated.
Mary, that could take a while.
Well, I know, I said if some miracle happened and we get, and we get this influx of vaccines that are shipped our way.
I don't know that I would view it as a miracle if I think it's not going to happen until April.
That's if a miracle happens, I think we have a good plan and we just need to follow it through, we don't need a miracle.
I agree, we have a well-thought-out plan that we've been working with and I, I think we need to stick with it. But again, tweak the, the phase-in, but in general, the plan I think is sound and has been studied.
Trustee Moses.
I think we're, we're not much different from the original plan. If we just consider that one, one week, we start with a learning labs for an entire week. And considering the numbers are still going down, then we start with the regular classes K to 12, K to 2. And that's two weeks. So the only difference that I see is just starting one week early with, with, with the learning labs, which I do agree with.
Number one, make sure that I'm understanding it correctly. The Monday after we get a report that takes us under 5% will not start learning labs. It will be the second Monday after that report, correct?
Correct.
All right, if everyone agrees with that one, Trustee Watts.
And then just to piggyback, so we would get, just to clarify, so we would actually get a report on a Tuesday of 5%, which would then open the possibility, so the following Tuesday, if that report also supports a 5% or below, then the following Monday, the learning labs would be open.
That sounds like the idea.
Okay, just want to make sure, so we, so we would really be, you know, again, like the two reports, 5% below, and then the Monday learning lab, after the two reports that come out on a Tuesday.
One thing that I will bring up, Trustee Barry, you've talked about trends. Say the first report reads 4.8%, the following week it says 4.9%. While that did trend back up, it didn't trend strongly.
It was still under 5%.
You're still under 5%, but somebody could make a case that, but they, it trended up. Even though that could be a very small change, this gets back to the idea of when would we look at shutting it down? And I'm not convinced if we went back over 5%, like if we went to 5.1 from a 4.9 or a 5, is that enough for us to all of a sudden hit the brakes again? Either going to shut it down or not progress.
And as you're saying that, I was looking at the action item that was presented to us, where it says, the last, the last sentence, it says, as soon as, as it hits, as soon as, as it hits or approaches the 5%, I think we can make it work, where we can just, you know, fix it to say, as soon as it hits 5% or less. The only difference would be approaching, as soon as it hits 5% or less.
Why would we be looking at this new motion if we're all talking this for the most of us?
Because I've heard a couple of my colleagues say that they would probably be comfortable with this. What I'm presenting is someplace in the middle.
But it still is, is taking it down to a one week.
Yes, that would, I, I, I would strongly, strongly approve to stick to our plan.
So then we don't have to-
Tweaking, yeah, we don't have to do anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be, I'm good with that.
I would agree with you, I mean, we can talk about this all night, you know? And, you know, you have a plan in place, I think we should move forward with it.
We're almost there.
Trustee McDonald, you're muted.
I agree, but the one thing that has changed that I agree with is the fact when we do start phasing in, we are adding the sixth graders and the ninth graders. So that is a change, a variant from our original plan, but the original plan is sound.
That's not part of the motion.
Yeah, and that was mentioned by Dr. Malick, who is, you know, a minor tweak, which I don't think anybody objected to.
Okay.
I wouldn't object it to, I wouldn't object to it.
I have a real quick question too. When we do start the learning labs, if that's the way that we go with that, which students would be invited into that initial session of learning labs?
We could start, we were going to start, actually, all students. We would start phasing it in with those with need because we had them all going. And so all students technically would be eligible. Now, it doesn't mean all students are coming in, it would be those that we've already looked at, that would need, would have needed those learning labs going back to September.
The students with the highest needs.
Yeah, and/or those that had made a, you know, maybe a request for a certain reason. I'm going to just share the timeline again so you see it in front of you, let's see, is it there? Just so you see, so again, just to review, week one would be learning labs and then it's two weeks after week three, K2. So just so you have it in front of you, if that's still- Just to refer, that, is that good with everyone?
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
What we're saying though is, again, if it has to be the second Monday after the first report that takes us under. So that would really then in my eyes be after week two, right, not week one? I would read this as a week after we get started, learning labs would go.
Well, this is just delineating the scheduling, this doesn't have anything to do with the trigger. This is just saying, week one starts the learning labs, week three, they go for two weeks. It does, it doesn't have anything to do with the, the other component, which is what triggers the beginning of this.
I think it does, because to me, if we said week one and, and we, we say this is the starting point and then they're expecting a week later, this is going to happen. We're saying it's not a week later, it would be two weeks after the number.
No, they're, no, that's not how I'm reading this.
Am I misunderstanding this?
The trigger starts when we get to the, the level D and 5% we, for two weeks. Okay, that's that. Then the first week after that, this starts. And then two weeks later, the next phase-in starts.
Okay, and if that's the case, then I would understand it to be that it would be three weeks after we would hit the number before we would start learning labs.
That's what I understand.
Yeah. No, week one, week two, okay, yeah.
That seems like a long time.
Well, I think that's what Irene Watts proposed too, right?
No.
Two good weeks.
No, I'm looking, I'm looking at my calendar, safe for, so what I'm proposing is not three weeks, I'm proposing two weeks. So since we get those on Tuesday, hypothetically, on Tuesday, the 26th, we get a report of 5% or below. So that to us tells us, okay, we're trending in the right direction. Let's see if on Tuesday, February 2nd, if that supports what we're seeing on the 26th. If on February 2nd, the report says we're at 4.8%, so that gives us two reports of 5% or below. That second report then says, come Monday, February, I mean, just take out my calendar, February 8th, learning labs begin.
So she is doing the one week. But it's two reports.
It's two reports.
Two reports.
Two reports, and it's, it's actually 13 days.
So the one question I would just have on that is, if that's the case and we're doing it and I'm fine with it, that, the way the current plan is, is it's two weeks after that, that the K12, K2, 6 and 9, do we want to stick with that? Or if we're going to do the extra week, should we move week that, the, the K2 that's currently says week three, could we move that to week two? Because you're getting that, that buffer and that's the only thing, because it will then take quite a while to get things going. And so I just, if you're going to do that, I would request maybe allowing me to change week three to week two, change week four to week three, and week five to week four.
I would be okay with that.
And you're fine with it?
That makes sense to me, and I think it's a little less confusing.
Well, and I guess does that leave room for preparation? I, I just want to make sure that I'm not, I guess, I always thought it was, it was two weeks. I didn't realize that really the conversation was more of a three-week time period.
Yeah, we'll be okay because the reality is, is all we've been doing is preparing the last several months. And when we talked about in October, we were ready to go then after the two weeks. Now we've had all this additional time. And so we, you know, everyone will be on notice, everyone knows publicly, staff knows, we put out notices. I think we'll, our team will be ready to go.
Okay, and that, and so I guess just to follow up and clarify, if learning labs, say for instance, hypothetically, we had two reports, they would start on February 8th. They would maintain participation for two weeks. So the next group of K2, they would come in on February 22nd.
Well, I'm-
No.
It was just updated on the screen.
Okay, so, so we're not giving the learning labs the two-weeks buffer?
Right.
No, one week.
Before the next group comes in.
Not in this system.
I'm suggesting to modify that so that you don't need that extra two weeks. But again, it's the pleasure of the board, I'm, I'm okay with.
I would like to see the two weeks, just so that if there are any issues, we can, we can have those two weeks to handle that before we bring in the large group of K through 2. I feel more comfortable having learning labs for two weeks so we can learn from that.
The issue in my head is you're talking about seven weeks from the time you first go under the 5% before we could possibly have all students have a chance to get into their buildings.
So if you want to do two weeks of learning labs, then what you do with your scenario, after the first week, we go under eight, or under 5%, which would be, you said the 26th, then that February 2nd is when you would originally start learning labs and then two weeks later, the, the other.
And under our current learning lab agreement, well, I'm not going to call it agreement, but regular, that, that would be how we would look at it anyway, we would look at that 5% so we could do that, so I can change it.
So the difference basically would be whether that buffer, there's a week of nothing buffer and then a week of learning lab or two weeks of learning lab. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Is to, is to, I'm going to recommend that you choose one or the other, but not both, just because it, it's good, you know, by the time we get into instruction, we're still being safe and all the things. But if you keep both, and you can, I, you know, my recommendation is to choose one or the other though, that is what I'm recommending.
I'd agree, because then you're too many, too far out.
Yeah, two weeks of waiting for the testing or of 5% or two weeks of learning lab. Is that what you're saying, Glenn?
So what I'm saying is, if, if you say, because we can do it, because your plan that you approved in October really didn't say anything about the learning labs. We could have done it under the, you just said, look at it and expand. But what I'm saying is if you get that Tuesday report that's 5%, the following Monday, we can, so scenario one, the following Monday, we can start learning labs, okay? And then we would then wait two weeks, so it'd be week three, the K2 would come in. So you still have that two and a half week buffer, that's scenario one. If you choose to wait, if you choose that the report comes in Tuesday and you want another Tuesday report of the 5%, then what I'm suggesting is then the learning labs come in the following Monday, then I'm saying only one week to start K2 because you're still getting that two and a half.
Right, yeah.
And I'm recommending, because otherwise, I'm going to, we're talking way far out to get anybody in the schools. So I, I think we have to, I strongly recommend choosing one or the other, but not both.
And I don't think we had any problems with the learning labs in terms of any spread. It was stated once before that we could identify one case. So when the learning labs were working, the news we were getting from the teachers is that it was working well. They were glad to have the students, they were able to do it in a safe environment, they felt safe. So I think just waiting one week before starting the learning labs and then let the learning labs roll for two weeks before bringing anyone additional in should be sufficient.
I'm okay with that, under scenario number one, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I like scenario number one better. I agree.
And just to add with the learning labs, you know there's going to be flexibility, it's not like you have all, it's going to be, you know, the special ed students and a few students here and there, it's going to be a phase-in. So then you're still going to have those two weeks that, that will prepare us, it's not like, okay, we know because we stopped them at the Monday, we can start them up, but we're ready with the learning labs. I'm not as concerned logistically with the learning labs.
Yeah, I feel comfortable with that.
Okay, what we had, what we had talked about, but I don't think we got to start implementing last time, was to increase the number of students allowed at a learning lab. Does that be done between the first and second week? Or just to play it safe, just get it started?
I would stick then with the current, if, since we're going to do this plan, I would just say, let us kind of go with the current numbers that we have, because if we're going to go K2 two weeks later, then we don't need to expand them. However, if somehow the data, we're not comfortable with the COVID data, then we could still look at expanding them. And we've already had those conversations with our committee and the union. So I guess it would depend on where the data's at, but I don't think you need to expand them if two weeks later, you're, you're going to be going into the, to the K2 for sure. I think it was different back in October because we were talking about not starting secondary students till the semester, which was quite a long window. And that's why we wanted to also expand the learning labs to get students to secondary into the buildings.
Thank you.
So Glenn, if we stick to the timeline that was presented in the report, are you able to right now to amend that action item? So we can see it before we do anything?
Um, yeah, I just changed the one that you said. Let's see here, okay.
Excuse me for one month.
So we really don't need number one then, because, do you agree with that?
Yeah, yeah, that's just a lot of verbiage.
So I'll just take that out. And then I would just say maintain the COVID metrics that were approved in on October 26th, reaffirm, right? So we're, we're really not changing anything on the COVID metrics. That's, I think, all we have to do, because let me just-
Well, wait though, are we doing, we're dropping it down to the one week, so we give the two weeks to the-
You're technically still okay because the learning labs were not part of that two-week. It was the in-person instruction, so you're still going to have two weeks of-
Oh, you're still going to have two, yes.
You still have it under this plan, that you said, that's why I think option A was good. And really, the only thing you're really changing is the modified timeline that was presented. So it'll actually appease, I think appeases everyone and it kind of simplifies it. Let me see here, if you like that wording, we, or we could say we will continue.
With the modifications in the timeline, okay, yeah.
I've got it under, because I was doing editing, I should get rid of that. Okay, I'll just get rid of this.
Well, Dr. Malick was working on that, I'm going to remind the, the public. The dates that we were just giving were just examples so we could figure out in our own heads the timeline that we'd be running this. We are not stating that, that we are bringing students back on any of those dates that were given.
It has to be a 5% or under of our positivity rate.
Okay, so I have, I'm going to read this and see if you're comfortable. And this will give an extension too, because then you're taking care of the state law, kind of like you did at the, one of the other meetings. Move that the board approved the plan from October 26th and every board meeting thereafter with the modifications in the timeline that we're presenting at this board, and that's not a study set retreat, it should say retreat. In addition, it is recommend, is not recommended. No, sorry, I got to get rid of that. We will continue to follow the COVID-19 metrics that were approved on October 26th.
Would we also add the adjustment to when the, the student groups would come in?
Yeah, I think, I think that, I think it says, I think that's taken care of by saying every board, with the modification in the timeline-
Timeline.
At this retreat, that recognizes that timeline. And then that's going to be on record because that presentation is going to be in the official minutes and on the board folder.
So if we're comfortable with this, I think it is time to ask then for someone to-
I didn't hear you, Jim.
Based on what we've got up here now, I need someone to make a motion.
I, I move to, so we pass the recommended action item?
I support it.
We've got a motion from Trustee Barry and supported by Trustee D'Ambrogio. Any further discussion on this, or any discussion on this? We're all clear on what we're talking about here? All right, I would ask for a roll call then.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee D'Ambrosio?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Moses, yes, Trustee Petlicov?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President Thor?
Yes. All right, the motion passes.
Hey Glenn, you can't make any more changes. Just kidding, just kidding, it's been a long day.
I think we voted quicker than you could.
We need a little laughter.
He was changing as we were voting on it, but I saw you upon the date, I was just messing.
Thank you, I needed that.
Is there anything else for us to discuss about this one tonight before, and I hate the fact that I'm not saying tonight, before we adjourn?
Can I just, President Thor, just for the public, I'm just going to review so they know and we'll get word out. We're going to have a, if the 5% hits- We're going to have a, um, if the five percent hits on the Tuesday. The following Monday, we would start learning labs, learning labs would go for two weeks. And it would be in week three, we start phasing in according to this plan, just so the public can hear it again.
As long, long as we maintain five or less and of de-rating.
Yes. And we'll get, we'll get communications out there to the public early this week.
Trusty Barry?
I guess, uh, Dr. Lake, I meant to ask earlier, then we got involved in the discussion. When it comes to asking our employees, did you take the vaccine, can we legally do that?
Yes, I checked with our legal counsel and we were okay doing that.
We're not breaking any laws or whatever, do they have to answer?
Um, I mean, here's the thing I would say is, you know, that, you know, someone may choose not to, so we're not going to be. You know, we're going to be careful of forcing, we're going to keep it in the HR. But here's the thing, is that what I would ask people to do is to think of their colleague. Because the, the reason why if they answer is that it would allow a colleague that may need to get the vaccine. And, and here's the thing, we don't want to say a certain number, because we don't know and we're sending them. Uh, you know, because they were in the group to the, you know, when, when they call me and say, let's say we got five hundred. I want to make sure that I get all those five hundred in, and so that's kind of why we need the data, so I, I would just request that they do. Respectfully for the benefit of their colleagues and the whole district and all of their fellow teachers, fellow bus drivers. Because that's really who's going to benefit, um, from it, so that's why, I mean, obviously it's up to them if they're answering. But I would strongly encourage them to, because we will keep it confidential, and I've already spoken to President Mazza and Mr. Higgins. And they're fully supportive of understanding why we need to do that.
I would like to thank. Dr. Malako, my fellow trustees, all the, the cabinet members that have spent a full day with us.
And it was a sunny day.
It was a sunny day, it, it, yeah, it was. We took care of a lot of things, we were able to, uh, learn a little bit about each other and prepare ourselves for the, the coming year. So at this point, I think we are, are good to adjourn and we'll see you all, uh, in two weeks. Everyone stay healthy, get those vaccines if you can.
Good night.
Good night.